Alright, it's uh six oh three, let's call the meeting in order with pledge allegiance followed by moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Silence. Thank you. Alright, roll call please.
Trustee O'Malley. Trustee Patton.
Here.
Deputy Manawaya.
Here.
Mayor Allen.
Here.
Trustee Bushman.
Present.
And trustee Patton.
Here.
And attorney Galkis. Absent man trustee Lewis.
So we had a little bit of discussion before the meeting and it sounds like we want to go into executive session to discuss personnel first before we proceed, so if that is what you guys wanna do, I would entertain that motion.
Motion, second.
Uh, any further discussion on it?
Just to talk a little.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Okay, we will go into executive session at six oh five, be back shortly, we're gonna move into the office. Need a motion to end executive session?
Motion.
Ben?
Second.
No, you first did it, sorry, yeah.
I did.
Brian, second, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Carries, we are back in regular session at six thirty, uh, six forty P M. Um, go back to the agenda, um, I will come back, well, let me just go through correspondences real quick if that's alright. Um, we received a note of thanks, uh, from village residents regarding the village's employees, wonderful work, I just wanna read this letter cuz I think it's, um, it's just awesome. Uh, to village leadership and employees, just a note of thanks to everyone involved in governing the village and sup- and the support people uh, who do the work maintaining, keeping the streets keep clean and clear of snow and cleanup afterwards, what a wonderful job, thank you. Couple of months ago, I needed someone to look at a slow leak in my cellar, so I called Jim Hober at the water department, he'd shared his contact information with me some years ago, I expected to be told to make an appointment for weeks later, but instead, he and his partner Josh, two fine men, showed up at my house within ten minutes and gave me guidance on how to correct the situation, what a wonderful place to live. Many thanks from Jim and Bonnie Devine, fifty-four River Street. I know we always tend to hear all the complaints, but it was really, really nice letter, so I'd like to, um, I'll get copies of that for each department head to share, so I think it's just really appropriate.
I like this address to village people.
To the village people. Uh, next one, I got a letter from, uh, Tammy Schnup, who's the post adjutant? I had to Google that role in all honesty. Adjutant, thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, which is a non-commissioned officer in a administrative position, thank you. Uh, for American Legion, uh, Huzick Post Forty, uh, coordinate several events throughout the community, generally free to the public, these events include, uh, not only services for Memorial Day, Veterans Day, and Fly Day, but also maintenance of the flags in the village and cemeteries, as well as the graveside flags for all veterans in local cemeteries. For many years, we've received a donation from you allowing us to provide these services, however, with inflation, we fear having to cut some of our free events to the public due to the increased expenses we incur, uh, we incur to hold these events. We hope that you as a board will appreciate the services we provide and consider a large, larger donation for us to be able to continue to offer free services to the community. We of course appreciate any donation we received and thank you for, uh, received, sorry, and thank you for your support. Sincerely Tammy Schnup. Um, I asked Denise to look into what we typically do, prior to the seventeen eighteen fiscal year, uh, we were doing two thousand on a regular basis for probably quite some time. Um, seventeen eighteen budget, we upped it to two thousand two hundred and fifty. Uh, so the seventeen eighteen year and the eighteen nineteen year, uh, are at twenty-two fifty and we budgeted this year as well for twenty-two fifty.
I think most of that goes to the parade too.
Mm-hmm. Probably the event afterwards as well.
The band, just, that's less than what it costs, that's more than what the bands cost, why wouldn't they? So for the school band, they're very expensive.
Oh. Worth every dime, let me tell ya, every dime. So we, I just wanted to share that with you, um, if you guys feel like you wanna discuss, um, changing our approach, I'm comfortable with what we're doing now.
I think it's fine where it is, and I think it's great we contribute.
Okay, yep, alright. Uh, lastly, we have a request from two village residents to use the gazebo on July twenty-first, thank you Marie, twenty nineteen at two P M, for their wedding.
They got time.
Is there anything going?
No.
Anything going on that nothing's good?
No.
There's something the day before.
Something the day before, they actually asked for that and I told them that it was not.
Music in the park on Saturday before.
The music in the park on Saturday.
That's what I thought.
This is, oh.
We take a break.
It's Sunday.
This is Sunday.
We take a break for the wedding.
You know, they could always pretend it's.
I did tell them that they were more than welcome to come.
Right, the concerts don't start at four, so they actually.
I did tell them that, but.
They'd rather do Sunday.
They asked about Sunday.
Okay, they probably do.
Yep.
I guess motion to approve use of the gazebo for the hopefully newlyweds, or happy, happily newlywed, I don't know.
On the dates, uh.
The peeps.
The dates of July twenty-first.
July twenty-first at two P M.
Alright, and second from Kevin, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed?
I'm opposed, they should got time to get out. I'm just kidding, no.
Alright.
Those Steve Colvin, the more of five K on October.
Motion carries, um, one more thing, and I, I can't remember if we've approved this already, um, I, I don't think we did, the Steve Colvin, alright, thank you for checking. The Steve Colvin, uh, Memorial Race, uh, five K, they, uh, would like to set the date for October twelfth.
It's Saturday.
Uh, it's Saturday, I sent an email to, um, Chief and, um, um, Neil.
Neil.
Sorry, names apparently, I don't think I heard anything, so I'm gonna assume that means it's all good. Wait a minute, here we go. Uh, no issues, um, from the chief. And so won't be any issues for Neil either.
Neil, no.
So, that's all good, so, uh, I'll be entering in motion to.
Motion, second.
That, October twelfth, Saturday, five K approval, um, that was Bobby and Ben, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed?
I'm gonna oppose, I think they should get out of here and not run, so.
No, I guess.
Make it a sit-down, no?
One other thing to add, just while you're watching it, the Little League Parade and Opening Day have to be rescheduled Saturday.
Oh, it's gonna Saturday, we schedule that from Saturday.
So should we approve their new date, just to make sure?
Is it this weekend, this Saturday?
I don't know, the, I'm just, I think it is.
They're not marching. No, they're not.
They're not gonna march?
We're just gonna have the opening ceremonies and some things.
Okay.
Down to the field.
I just wanted to preemptively approve it if they were going to, so they don't have to.
From what I understand anyway, no marching.
Okay.
Alright.
Is actually thought we'd have to approve it?
I'd like to jump right into the budget, so I'm gonna move the, um, people to be heard, um, for other stuff after the budget, but if anyone wants to speak on behalf of the budget, uh, now is your time. Hearing none, um, so, um, I just wanted to go back to a few things within the budget. Um, we have, uh, again, put forward a zero percent increase, uh, for the budget. Um, despite that, uh, one of my priorities has always been to take care of employees, something that my dad drilled into me, uh, for all the various things he was running, um, whether at IBM or church, uh, consistory, so my, um, plan had always been to get the salary increases uh, up to, uh, a level I thought was appropriate. Um, and even though that meant some, some fairly tangible increases over a couple of years, um, that was sort of where I put the propositions this, uh, this year. Um, we laid out, uh, the five possibilities, a two percent increase, a three percent increase, uh, a bump up to the original plan of the twenty fifteen average, uh, and a couple others for looking at twenty eighteen data, but in the budget right now is the possibility number three, uh, which is bumping it up to the, the twenty fifteen NICO averages. Um, so that was my thought on that, Denise, I did have one question for you. Um, police justice, acting police justice, and court clerks, what do we put in the budget for their percentage increase?
I think it was two percent.
Okay, for some reason, I didn't actually include those in possibility three, so I could not remember. Is there a way to easily figure that out or no?
Yeah, I need to check right now.
Alright, thank you. Um, so, we talked about this last meeting, um, I threw a lot of data at you, so do you guys wanna go around and just sort of give your own thoughts on uh, anything salary increases or budget?
Craig?
Sure, um, so, one thing is, um, aiming to hit an average isn't aiming at a moving target that's always gonna go up, so even if we reset to the current average, the fact that we do that will drive the average up. So I don't wanna establish that that's a precedent of how we're gonna figure out the salaries, I think they have to be based on what's right for the village. I'm, I'm okay with using it as a baseline, that's good, but I don't want it to be the end-all decision.
It's not a, not a constant thing we're gonna do.
Meaning you don't wanna be an average going up and you're doing it every time.
Yeah, that, that, and, and the averages can be thrown off as well by one village having a, a village highway superintendent that does five other jobs and they pay him two hundred thousand dollars, but he reports the title as village superintendent. Or conversely, they could have, you know, a village clerk that doesn't do anything and gets eighteen thousand dollars and that sinks the average. So we have to do what's right, and, and so, not saying that that isn't what's right or it is, but I just wanna, you know, make sure we don't establish that as a precedent.
Yep.
I just wanna throw out that, I mean, to say, I, I think if we're, it's in.
It is two percent, thank you Denise.
I mean, I think I'm, I'm frankly embarrassed that we wound up bringing up everyone to the twenty fifteen average, that we're not even there, that we're four years behind with our average, and I feel like, um, it's embarrassing that we're not paying the people that take care of our village so well, we just had a letter talking about the dedicated, just some of our dedicated employees, I know how hard everyone works, um, I'd like to keep it as it is, because I think that, that despite it's a can, for in some case be a big jump, I, as an educator, I don't make a lot, and actually, more than half these sellers would be more than I make, and I also know how hard, um, I work, and I know how hard our village employees work, and I, and I know what it's like to do something you're passionate about, but at the same time, you do get to a point where you might say, how much is enough before I find something else that's gonna pay me more, and I feel like we need to, there's no greater way to say we appreciate you by paying you the average, even if it's a four-year ago average.
Alright. And I will just say, uh, in terms of, uh, Craig's notion of, of not selling the present of always doing the average, I, I, that was, it was never my goal to always be looking at averages and moving forward, because at some point, we have to be satisfied with where we're at, and in my mind, go back to sort of a standard increase of rate. I just wanted to get to a point where I felt satisfied by it. Do you guys wanna? All for anything?
I, I, I look at, I look at my own two jobs, three jobs, whatever, um, and looking at some of these, and I won't say anything about anything, other than some people that, that could have a bump as much as eighteen percent, I could never ever imagine getting an eighteen percent raise in one year. So, to me, uh, if I get two percent in a year, that's a lot, sometimes you, I don't get any, so, I, I can never see raising someone's salary fifteen to eighteen percent, ever. Um, you know, it's a shame that they might be under the average, but that's the way it was, and we brought them up last year, didn't we? Didn't we raise?
Uh, from, yes, we did, uh, the seventeen eighteen year, we had a, a pretty substantial first bump.
Okay.
Uh, that also reflected the fact that the treasurer, clerk, and deputy clerk had been salaried for four days a week, but had actually been working five days a week for quite some time. Um, so theirs were significantly higher because of that, plus also an increase, and then last budget year, we capped it, um, at a five percent increase.
Now, I, now, while I don't wanna see anybody be way lower than, than what they should be, I also don't wanna see it go way over what I think it should be too, so, I mean, if you can come somewhere in the middle, I'd be more apt to do that, I'm not thinking of my own personal stuff, but I mean, it has to figure in, if I'm a, if I'm a taxpayer and I'm sitting in my house and I don't get a raise year after year after year, and then all of a sudden, I look and say, that person's getting a twelve percent increase, are you kidding me? And I, I'm working, you know, sixty hours a week and I'm not, you know, I'm not getting anywhere, so, I, I think Kevin, um, says it a lot at best when he talks about um, the taxpayer, you know, and, and when we do these numbers, we have to make sure that, that we're not changing the budget. I know you wanna go at zero percent, I don't wanna see it go any higher than, cuz you've already said that, but we have to make sure that the numbers work so that can happen. I just, just wanna make sure that, that we're, you know, that we're doing that, I don't, again, I'm not against anybody getting a raise, I, I'm fine with that, but I also wanna make sure that we're trying to take care of the taxpayer as much as we possibly can, because we're all taxpayers.
The five, the five percent cap, two years ago.
That was last year.
Last year, how has that arrived then?
Um.
I guess, second question, should we consider one for this year?
The first, uh, answer was, um, we did either a seventy-five percent increase to the average, or five percent max. So, when we, we, the first increase was a fifty, was getting them to fifty percent, um, of the, of the average. The next increase was to either get them the next twenty-five percent, or if the increase goes higher than five percent, to cap it at five percent. That was this past year.
Just go back to something Ben said, I know you mentioned, you know, all of us have had a lot of employers, I, I just recall somebody that was a really excellent employer at one point, and who could, when they could do a large raise, would, and said to me, you know, if you ever run a business someday, you're employing somebody, be the employer that you wish you had. And meaning, you know, if you can give them an eighteen percent raise to bring them up to where everyone else is, to me, that's being the employer I wish I had, you know, be the employer you wish you had.
I think you have to, I think you have to be somewhere between the employer you think you have and the realistic employer that you need to be. I, and I think that's where you need to be, so if you're looking at eighteen percent and I'm looking at two, then you've gotta be somewhere in between, like eight. You know, you know what I mean?
I do, I'm just thinking that eighteen percent is something from four years ago, which doesn't even get us up to, like, today, if we were, that'd be twenty-seven percent, which is to me, the least we could do to get people to where they deserve to be, as, as just, uh, our appreciation. I know we had a discussion like, it's maybe three years ago, when, when people couldn't take vacation times, and I think I said something similar of, you know, I wanna, I wanna be, as a person on this board, the employer that I, you know, someone that we people wanna work for, not because they have to work for.
I mean, I've, I've seen how much more responsibilities Denise and Neil and Jim and everybody else has taken on since the water situation, but I've also seen, uh, how people are struggling to pay their water and sewer bills and their taxes, and when people move here, they say, jeez, this place, it costs me a fortune to live here in Huzick Falls, because you got high sewer and water and New York State taxes, and to say that we're gonna give somebody an eight, almost an eighteen percent raise, to me, is sending uh, a bad message to our taxpayers that, uh, jeez, how, how can you do that when we're, we're struggling to pay our bills and you wanna hand out eighteen percent raises?
And I understand, when you look at just the microcosm of, that's a, one eighteen percent raise is, is an enormous raise, no one really ever gets that. Um, at the same time, it's through the window of, we have a zero percent tax levy increase right now.
Right, right.
But, but that's not to say that, I understand your point, I, I totally understand your point.
I'm just thinking of the taxpayers in Huzick Falls, and, and the average guy that's working at a factory locally, that they're not seeing any kind of increase like that, or even in my position of the county, two years, we saw zero, and in the last couple of years, it was one point five percent and two point five percent, so, you know.
Denise, I have a question for you. If we were to make changes here, first off, would you be able to rerun the numbers on, cuz I know that we, we distribute salaries, um, based on the water sewer in general, is that, is that a huge pain? And the second thing is, if we did that, then, but still wanted to maintain the exact zero percent tax levy, could we take whatever funds were moved and put them into something else, or set them aside for reserve, or throw them into like a contingency or something like that? What would be the best way to do that?
Now's the time that you'd wanna do that, if you wanted to move money from budget line item to budget line item.
Each budget has a contingency, correct?
Yep.
While, while you're looking at, I just wanna put my two cents in that, you know, I mean, I, I agree with Brian's point, you know, we wanna make the people understand that we appreciate him, and and like Kevin said, you know, Denise, Jim, the wa- anybody involved with the water, Neil included, you gotta include Neil in the water too, and, uh, just that the amount of workload that they've done has increased greatly, but at the same time, we have to face the music when, to, you know, the taxpayers, and to justify it double-digit increases, not for everyone, but anyone getting a double-digit, digit increase is a hard pill to swallow for average taxpayer, who's like Kevin said, is struggling right now. Um, you know, I mean, and the median in, medium income in this community is not on the, you know, the high end, so it's like, a, a little bit is, you know, does affect people in the long run. So if we can come up with a, a number that, a, a percentage that we cap it at, I'd be okay with that, but I also have to also say, I don't agree that, and this is not a reflection of the justices, but they're elected officials, no other elected officials are getting increases, and I said this last year as well, and I, I don't feel that the elected officials should get an increase.
Which, are you talking about the, um?
That's the justices.
Cuz we're not getting increases.
No, right, well, any, well, the only, the justices and us are the only ones that are elected.
Court clerk?
Court clerk is not elected, she's getting a two percent increase.
Okay, so that would still happen.
I, I wouldn't have a problem with that.
Okay. Um, okay, thank you guys.
That's my.
For this dialogue and for handling opinions and disagreements so, so well, I wish we had high school students here watching this, because it's so.
What, what did I say when I walked in here?
This is the meeting that should be at.
This is the perfect meeting for them to be here for, to talk about this.
So, so that'll be your headline, trustees wax poetic about lack of students, I'm just kidding.
I think that will get missed.
Okay, um, okay, then, at this point, I think if we wanna make changes to the salary scale, we need to come up with that first, or you, you had also expressed changing the justices?
Yeah, that's, that's, well, see, I don't know, because I don't see that in here, because it's, this example.
It's supposed, it is a two percent increase, like Denise.
Right, so I don't know what the number is.
So we would just basically.
I agree with Bobby on that, that I don't think there should be any increase for any elected officials including the justices.
I agree.
Okay, then.
Is that, is that the spreadsheet that you did, Rob? Yeah.
Yes.
Cause the other thing is, I don't have that in electronic format.
Oh, I can go email, I can email to you. Oh, but I'm supposed to email to you like three different times too.
I have the other one that was initial, but I don't.
This is a good time to corner them, right, we all heard it on the.
There's nothing in it, but that's.
Okay, so, um, I'm looking then for a motion to.
You need to mention line item.
Oh, we don't do any.
Not, not yet.
Maybe we don't do that now.
That's later.
We don't? Okay.
We're gonna have Denise modify line items.
Okay.
Now, any things we take out, I'd like to put the exact amount in contingency, that way, is that, is that okay with you guys?
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Now, we should put that in whatever motions we change, so for example, if we're, if we're.
Yeah, as long as it's not nitrates.
If we're changing the salary to zero percent, then we'll need to also include in that, 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 those funds will go into contingency.
I guess I raise a, I guess I would say at that point, then why, why don't we just invest that in our employees if it's going into contingency anyhow? I mean, because the tax increase levy is zero, and if we're talking about taxpayers are struggling, I know it's a matter of, what about me, with sometimes people have that attitude, but at the end of the day, we're, you know, we, we're, we forget we're investing in people, just as much as we invest in infrastructure, and people are an important part of what we do too, I guess I don't see the point in moving it, why not just cut it out and lower the.
Ideally, we never spend contingency.
Well, I guess my, my response, Brent, it's, it's perception, to me, it's perception, you know, I understand the concept when you're saying, when it's not gonna increase anything, but at the same time, whatever little amount it is, we can put in contingency, you know what, I mean, we're not flush, we need, we, you know, we're always, we need, you know, we need extra money whenever, who knows what's gonna pop up next?
Well, we have sewer projects, about a thousand other grants.
We have a building, uh, you know, we're building a new highway, highway building, you know, I mean, I'm sure there's gonna be some amendments where it's gonna have to be, you know, come up with some extra money, that's my opinion.
If we don't, if we, if we don't spend the contingency, then we can use that money, um, to limit what we, what we can next year, so we can keep taxes and increases lower.
Right.
I mean, I, and then, those are all positives as well, I guess.
I know contingency is not a very particularly sexy thing, because it's just like, well, it's contingency, but in my mind, if we don't spend it, then that's money we still have and we're saving.
And over perception, I guess I'm more, you know, for me, do the right thing instead of being right, is, is where I'm at.
Gotcha. Alright, um, you guys have talked about the getting rid of the justices increase?
I just have a question, Brian.
Yes, Ben.
Um, if, if all of a sudden, this budget passes, and I'm a working employee for Huzick Falls, and I get told that I'm getting an eight percent raise, am I gonna be happy or am I not gonna be happy? If I just found, if I just found out that I was getting, I'm getting paid what I'm getting paid, and that's what it is, and then all of a sudden, I find out I'm getting an eight percent raise, I'm gonna do cartwheels down Main Street.
Except for.
It's, it's unfortunate that it started at seventeen percent, now it's eight, but they don't know that, and do they need to know that? They don't need to know that. We're, we're trying to figure out the best way we can to make sure that everybody's taken care of, now whether it's a four percent raise or an eight percent raise, you're still getting a raise. And if, you know, if I'm making thirty thousand and all of a sudden now I'm making thirty-two, four, and I, I could've made thirty-five, I don't know that. So I'm just happy to, to have a job that I love, and, and I'm getting an increase in pay, so that, I guess that's the way I look at it, and if we can take that extra money that we're not, that we're not using and, and move it somewhere else, so all of a sudden, in the middle of January, we find out that we need an extra five thousand dollars, and it's sitting there, and we don't have to steal it from somewhere else, I'm happy, as, as a village, as a village, um, as a village, what are we, board member, thank you. As a village board member, I, I'm gonna be happy that we did that, and the employees still gonna be happy cuz they're, they got a raise, so everybody wins. That's the way I look at it, it's not just the employees winning, it's the village winning, and that's, that's what we need to, to focus on, we were elected to take care of the entire village, not the village employees, not yourself, not the water, and not anything else, it's the entire village, and if you can't, you, you have to, and I'm not, I'm not just pointing you out, but you did bring it up, we have to work for the entire village, not just a certain segment, and if we can take care of people at four percent, five percent, eight percent, instead of four percent, five percent, seventeen percent, I say, let's do it, and let's, let's get it done. Again, that's just my opinion, I, I just, you know, and I, and I respect where you're coming from, I totally get it, I wanna take care of people too, but I wanna take care of all of us. We're all village and village residents, we're all gonna pay the tax, so if we can save something that we don't have to spend later on, gosh darn it, I, I wanna do that. How many times during the year do we talk about, oh my god, we need an extra seventy-five hundred dollars, it comes up all the time, and where's that money gonna come from? Well, if we're able to squirrel a little bit away and be able to pay for that, that's one less nut the mayor has to worry about trying to crack. That's, that's my thought, I won't say anything else.
Could you get a nutcracker for me for my?
Yeah, I would, one of those little men.
I mean, put this in perspective, look, we're in a great position, we have a zero percent tax increase, we're handing out raises to village employees, and we're setting some money aside for a rainy day.
Rainy day.
How, how, why should we feel bad about any of that?
We shouldn't.
We'd always make ourselves feel good about anything in the world. Some people describe slavery as, you know, they treated their slaves well, they gave them free housing and free clothes.
History teacher, watch out.
They should be happy, but there's nothing I can say that's.
I don't think it's a direct comparison.
No, but it, it, there's nothing I can say that'll make you guys see the embarrassment, I feel that we're paying people less than the average from four years ago.
Somebody's gotta be less than the average always.
Then why do we have to be shit town, because we're not, and that, and the way we pay our employees is exactly that.
That's like comparing apples and oranges, though, you're talking about some of these averages, these communities, like Chester, Rhinebeck, some of these well-to-do communities that have a bigger tax base and, you know, who knows what, what factories are in these, these communities, that, it's, everybody's different. And we're not, we're not, and I'm sure we'll probably have the lowest medium income of any, any of these other towns.
And we don't have a lot of factories for a tax base, we know that, we have one.
Alright, let's put some tangible, uh, numbers on the board then, if you guys wanna make some changes to it. You, you would talk about the justices first?
Yeah, so if we can take away that two percent, whatever that amounts to, I mean, I, it's based on what.
So, we would need a motion?
No, no, you're, you're, right now, you're just working on the tentative budget.
Okay.
You wanna make changes to it, you can make changes.
Denise?
Bobby, did you just want the amount of the two percent on Tommy's elected position, or the whole department?
No, 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 just the, no, oh, I'm sorry, is it just, oh.
Well, Harold's not elected.
That's right, Harold's not, he's appointed, correct?
Yeah.
But, regardless, the justices, I, I don't, I don't think should.
I can tell you what the difference.
Yeah, that's still, two per, two percent, that's fine, it's, what is that, the, on Tommy's is eleven, five, eight times two percent.
Just easier to look at the line item in the budget?
Uh, what number is the line item? Uh, one, uh, eleven, ten.
Are they in, um?
Emily, how much do you get paid on the school board?
Are they broke up?
The difference is three hundred and seventy-seven dollars.
So three hundred and seventy-seven dollars would be, would the difference between keeping them what their salary at now?
And that's combined?
Yes.
Three seventy?
Three seventy-seven.
Okay.
See, so how much does, do each of us get a year as a trustee?
Twenty-two? It was two thousands.
We're the lowest on the, uh, scale here.
So if we did.
Year?
By far.
I'm just saying, the school board works a lot and they don't get paid, if we wanna look out really truly for best interests of the village, why aren't we also looking at making this a volunteer position to kinda go with Ben's line of thinking?
You know, how many people, how many people do we get for the zoning and planning board?
What do you mean?
How many people do we, to volunteer for the planning?
Well, but they volunteer for school board, they get paid zero, and they do just as many hours and as many issues as well. I'm just saying, if we're gonna go down that line of what's best for the village, you know, maybe we should look at not having salaries for us either.
I'm not even gonna respond to that.
I'm not either.
I'm just, Ben, I'm taking your line of explanation though, and I'm kinda expanding.
I'm not asking for a raise.
No, but you're, we're still getting paid, if we took no salary to do this, just like the school board does, I think, I think that would be in the best interest.
This job when I got elected didn't pay zero.
Okay.
So, I'm, I'm going whatever, whatever the elected position is, and I'm not asking for a dime more.
Let's, let, let's not go down that road, do we really, are you, are you seriously proposing we do that tonight?
Donate your, your salary to a local cause.
Um, I could.
We don't need to, we don't need to address what people are gonna do with their salaries, but I'm.
Turn it around and kinda expand that line of thinking, and I'm giving you a reflection of what it's.
Thing, we need to come up with some, some definites right now, so if, if people are gonna have some ideas, put them out there and we'll vote on them. That's how this works, so Bobby, you found out that, the, the difference of three hundred and seventy-seven? Is it e- even or, and some change? Okay.
Right.
Um.
And, and that's not about the money, it's a matter of, like I said, the elect, it's a matter of principle of elected officials know what we're, we know what the pay rate, that our pay is. We don't, we, if we don't get a raise, we don't get a raise.
So any, we don't need to make individual motions to this?
You don't, you're working on the budget, if you wanna make changes in certain line items, you can discuss that.
So, and, so you have the line item we need on that Denise, for what, okay.
Do you want me to reduce it by the three seventy-seven?
That, that's, I mean, if that's, that's my proposal, I don't know.
Well, how many of you agree with that move?
I'm good with that, I'm okay with that.
Okay, then, yeah, well, that will, we'll, we'll make that change for now, um, in terms of salaries. Um, we talked, I, I heard the cap talked about.
Right.
What, uh, caps do you wanna propose, or do you wanna push through what we have right now and possibly?
Can we cap, I mean, can we, instead of the range of the, what the increases, the ones of, of double-digit increases?
Mm-hmm.
We range from eleven point nine to eighteen point two, but can we cap those at eight percent?
Denise, that would, uh.
That's gonna be one, two, three, four, it's only four, correct?
What's the best way to figure that out Denise?
Just cap it eight percent?
Anything that goes above eight percent would be capped at eight percent, everything else stays as is.
If you can email me this, I can just plug those in.
I can do that right now. Give me one second.
Oh, you gotta email.
Bobby have the lead?
Yep, okay, so.
Was there anything else?
I was gonna say, is there anything else that we, that anybody else has any opinions on about this?
Oh, yeah.
Is eight percent, is eight percent agreeable?
Where's, where are we getting eight percent from? I feel like it's an arbitrary.
Double, it's double the biggest one I've ever gotten.
But it's, that's not about what about me.
I, no, I, you asked where I came up, I doubled the biggest one I'd ever gotten, you asked where I came up with it.
But we can be a better player than that.
You know. We can with, not in the private sector, we can, but when we're playing with taxpayers' money, I don't think we can.
I don't think you would find an eight percent raise in the private sector.
Not unless you got a huge promotion, that's a change in jobs.
We're also fixated on the percentage and not the reasons behind it, so.
Oh, no, I totally get the reason behind it, right, that's not, that's not the case at all.
Raise was.
E- e- everybody, everybody thinks they're underpaid.
But the, but these guys actually are.
Well, I, I, I mean, in, u- u- understandably so, but there's a lot of people who are in, in the whole community. I mean, you, if you look at, yeah, if you're, if you're looking at this, it's.
I guess if you're underpaid, you can find other.
The average, the average of those, of those fours is a thirteen percent increase, if you average the four of those double digits.
Cap that at thirteen, cause that makes more sense, cause we're actually, we're actually.
We wanna make, we wanna save money, we don't wanna, we don't wanna just break even, we wanna put money aside.
We're putting it aside, we're still collecting in taxes, we're not really saving it, we're doing it at the expense of employees that. I mean, look at the last column of what the rate would be this year, I, I really.
Right, I, I don't think that is something we should fixate on is what that average is, cause go look at the numbers that comprise that, some of those averages, that, you gotta look at the range that's in there.
Mm-hmm.
And, and we're not always the lowest, and we're not, we're obviously ever the highest.
I didn't get it.
You know, some of those columns, I think, had forty thousand dollars in difference, you know, in salary.
Yeah, you're right, Craig.
You know, the, the same position in two different towns pays forty thousand dollars different, doesn't mean that we should be in the middle of those, we should figure it out and be where we should be.
In college. And we're.
Well, do we have another number, if we wanna, don't, don't wanna do eight? I mean, so did. Put it this way, does anybody other than Brian wanna go higher?
I mean, going to Ben's point, I mean, last year if I got a five percent raise, it would've been, that would've been great. And I'm getting a bigger raise this year, that's also great. Right, I mean, it, kinda you set the expectation of what you do the previous year. Now, if I did my job as good as I did last year, I hope to get the same raise as I got last year, that's what I go into my reviews hoping for.
Sometimes that's gonna work out, and sometimes it's not.
Yeah, perfect example, perfect example, I know it's private sector, but last year, our, our sales went from twenty-six to fifty-three million dollars. I got a three percent increase, I asked for more, I asked for like a couple more percent and got denied. And, I mean, just my division I'm responsible for increased by twenty-five million to twenty-seven million dollars. And I got denied a, and I don't make a million dollars, believe me, it's not like I'm asking for an increase, you know, a huge increase, but that's the way, you know. And, cause you know what my boss said to me, he said, you know what, these other divisions had good years too, we gotta look at the big picture, you know, it's nineteen thousand employees. I know we have a, a small group, but the concept's the same.
I agree.
But we still had dispatch in the budget, we don't, we don't pay anymore.
I thought, yeah, we didn't pay it this year.
No, we didn't pay it.
Cause it's supposed to be like fourteen thousand dollars, right?
It was something else I saw, it was for shade trees, fifty-five thousand dollars.
Shade trees, what are those for? Where are you seeing the, where are you seeing the dispatch coming?
It's gone down, but, I don't know, they just keep it in there just for, to have something there.
Eighteen, nineteen. Contractual sixty-four, sixty-seven, fifteen, that was twelve thousand dollars, right?
Yeah.
Paid eight eighty-three, seventy-one.
Rob, Kevin, just ask a question.
What's that?
Um, dispatch.
Yeah.
Is, that's still on here for this year?
Where are we looking?
I'll have to ask Denise about that when she comes out.
The other one was shade trees. Contractuals, shade tree, fifty-one hundred.
Keep in mind, we'll ask Denise when she comes out.
I was just curious, I.
Where's it, fifty-one twenty, ten?
What, shade tree?
Yeah.
Eighty-five, sixty, dash four.
Shade tree, fifty-one hundred dollars, but it's nothing for this year, is it, right, isn't fifty-one hundred, is that this year's proposal?
It's right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
How come the chief of police is not on the bottom of the sheet, right?
Uh, there's a, there's a standard increase, that's, there's been a regular standard increase to that one. I, they just didn't cover it, but it's, it's been a standard increase.
But it is figured in, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. No, that was two percent increase, that I just missed it in the data there.
Okay, so make sure that's on.
Ha, ha, it's funny. Check on Denise and see how we're doing, I'll warn her, we have a couple more questions.
Are you doing it now?
Uh.
Are you figuring it?
Okay.
No, it wasn't, I was doing something to.
O- o- overall the increases, you mean?
For the, for these, for these here, which are the ones that are gonna be effective.
Oh, right, the ones that they went from to, yeah.
Plus three on the seventy, seventy.
Hello there. Sure. Oh, my, well, usually, depending.
Thought about running over the writing once or twice.
Don't you have apple pack?
Are you explaining the no candy type?
Yes, I figured it was gonna be a quick meeting and I didn't bring a snack.
I'm sorry, when did, when did things like meeting and quick ever go together?
He said that in his emails.
No, he said that, no, what he said was, he said the executive session would not last more than thirty minutes, we've already had one.
I obviously did not read that email correctly.
Who didn't?
Rosenstein.
And you had, you had another five or six minutes, you could've walked over and gotten something. I'd have to shop.
Oh, did he resign?
Wow.
Okay.
Does it say why?
You know, we got an eight percent.
That requires the full A, now having said that, could've missed a balance, subdivision rank safe, we're all major subdivisions.
Bless you.
Thank you. Tree has like an application for four and another one for two. There's a concept of segmentation, right? Breaking things apart, try to avoid applicable regs, so, could be, could be problematic. Could be, we could raise some issues, right?
Ken, why, why are we paying Tony again?
Wow, really?
Because, because it hasn't been.
And that amount's not correct either, what you said earlier, cause that'll go down, but it has to be budgeted because the position's being abolished.
Right, Tony, that's what we talked about last.
Yet.
Right.
What's that?
New business is opening in town.
Well, what?
Restaurant at the old Babsen place.
Really?
Who's opening?
Who's going in?
Some French guy.
Really?
Is he gonna do French food?
French fries. I, I, I don't think Nova French restaurant would go very well in Huzick Falls, but.
Something other than, something other than pizza.
Yeah.
Yes.
I don't see, unfortunately for me, too many, uh, French restaurants being successful anywhere in the country.
You got a better shot of putting a sushi restaurant in.
There's one at all, but he doesn't pay, and that's about the extent of it.
A lot of people do.
I think there's one in Saratoga, but, uh.
I love sushi.
You'd be right.
The problem with French food is for anybody that's trying to watch their figure, it doesn't work out so well.
Well, the French people are skinny.
Well, there's a lot of other things that go along with that too.
Guys are making me hungry.
I know.
Well, you got time, you can go over there.
I haven't eaten either, but I know I'm.
That's a good thing though, it's been a long time, a lot of people looked at that building and.
I was gonna say, I was, I was surprised that wasn't.
Kevin, that stuff in it?
Ex- Doug's oil.
That stuff in it.
Somebody bought Babsen's?
Property's transferred.
Oh, good.
Do you know who it is, Marie?
Um, his name is, uh.
Henri.
Huh?
Henri.
That's actually Dominique.
That doesn't sound French.
What is it?
He's very French.
What's his name?
Dominique.
Dominique Bailey.
Bailey?
Bailey, sounds like a good old Irish boy.
Not Bailey, it's French, Bailey. He's not Irish, he's really French.
He has a very thick accent.
French European.
European. South France.
One modification, I had one in southern.
The husband was an increase, nothing negative. Oh, that's never mind, I see.
Yeah.
Is Dominique a doctor? I know that's a she.
Oh, great, I'm running out of battery. That's, that was the change I had wrong. And it's still gonna go up more.
Yes.
Right.
Yes.
Yep. Do you guys have a couple other questions when Denise comes back? So right now, what we're doing is removing any changes with a cap of eight into contingency. Capping everything else at eight.
Anything that's over is worth capping.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yep.
Shade trees and.
There was, they weren't really major things.
No, so just one, I wanted, I mean, shade trees, I mean, it kinda jumps out.
While we wait for Denise.
Dispatch is a big one, though, dispatch is fourteen thousand, or thirteen thousand.
No, I don't think we, we haven't done that for a while.
Paid it? No, I know we hadn't, but it's still on there, that's the question.
Uh, what page, what, what line item is that one?
Thirty twenty point four.
Is that in general?
Page, yeah, page three of the numbers.
Is this for general fund?
General, yeah, it's on a general.
Correct. What's that?
No, he's not from.
Oh, good.
It's from the south of France.
Where are you, where's.
South of France.
Dispatch.
He lives in Troy, now.
Oh, I see. Uh, contractual slash all other. I'll ask Denise exactly what that one's for.
We asked, I remember this from last year, we asked the same thing.
It's one thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars. That's, yeah, that's the project. No, I'm sorry, the next one over is a tentative. The, the, the last column on the right, that's a tentative, so we have a thousand for in there. Um.
But didn't you have a dispatch on there too?
No, and I, I forget exactly what that expense comes from.
No, you know what it is, uh, what is it?
While we're waiting.
It's under public safety, isn't it?
This is a, a, a review of the, uh, tabled, can you guys share that? You have a copy of it cast over to Kevin? This is what I emailed earlier, this is the water, the summary of the water stuff.
Yeah.
Um, if you guys can review that, if you follow the big numbers, it'll just walk you through really quickly. Um, but this is a request, uh, for credit due to water leak, and you guys can flip that over as we're waiting.
And, and, and again, it's, it's a rental property, correct?
Yes. Uh, no, it's not, cause it's, it's.
I was grandfathered, it's vacant.
Well, it's vacant. I don't know if it was originally in.
Well, it went from vending, the previous board approved it as a, an apartment until it changed ownership.
Oh, this came quite a while ago.
It did, it came back up in January, I think.
Oh, okay, weeb's.
I mean, this is kinda fit in what we decide last time, it's a commercial property, buyer beware, you know, it's your own responsibility, even if you're not there to make sure. It's not leaking.
How is, I guess, how is it this different than?
What we tried last week.
We didn't do anything, it doesn't seem like it's all that different.
The only thing, uh, well, I'm, I'm sorry, there's a, a motion to deny the request is on the floor, anyone wanna second that?
I'll second that.
Okay, then, uh, further discussion, the only difference with this one is they were able to pinpoint their, the, the leak schedule to a much smaller period and, and took care of it, but again. Board's prerogative on this, and I think, uh, you guys, uh, we, sorry, not you guys, haha, we've set a precedent on this, so if that's the way you wanna go with it, that's fine. Do you have any other questions on this?
It's, it, it's repaired as of now, correct, though, that's.
Oh, yeah, he repaired it, he repaired it on Labor Day. So that the leak, they figure sometime between the beginning of, uh, the August to November pay period. And when he, they, they figured it out early September, got it fixed early September when he was up.
There wasn't any issue as far as vandalism, anything like that, that we need to be concerned with or anything like that, right?
Nope, he went into the details about, I think, a little bit about what he had to repair.
I see that, yep.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I feel his pain, but I, at the same time, I mean, because he lives in not local, doesn't mean that. Right, I mean, he's not, looks, looking this, the, the bill was sent to Florida.
And it's after the meter, isn't it, or before, it doesn't matter, it's in the building or not.
It's after, it would be after the meter, yeah.
But still, it's in the building.
Yep, yep. Um, another, another discussion, the motion is to basically deny, uh, all in favor? Opposed? Okay, motion carries, thank you. Sorry, we're kinda jumping around like crazy here. Denise, you want, uh, some more time? Okay, um.
The Great Oz.
While we're waiting, I wanna jump if it's alright, so we just finished off the last bit of old business, we will return back to the budget stuff. Under new business, I wanted to summarize a little bit of the past week or two. Andy, feel free to jump in. Basically, um. We have a portion of the sewer project that's gonna be digging up Lyman Street, Superior Street, and Water Street, which is the, the triangle down by the sandbar. After all that we've done for this, rebidding it and, uh, getting the contractors, signed contracts, everything. Um, ERM, who is the consulting, uh, firm that Honeywell is using for the John Street remediation efforts. Um, reached out and wanted to get some details on what's happening, because they had some concerns about the digging and so on and so forth. Uh, so we talked quite a bit internally, uh, quite a bit with MRB, um, and sat down and had a meeting last week with all of those parties, including. Uh, representatives from DEC. And, uh, went over the fact that, um, after going over the plans and discussing concerns. The basic two essential points from, from the DEC confirmed and later confirmed was, if we dig low enough that we hit the water table. Um, and have to manage the water, which means we have to pump it somewhere else so that we can keep digging. That water must be treated as contaminated materials, and that's not just due to PFOA, but due to the TCE contamination down there.
It's actually more to TCE, right, down there?
Yeah, although TCE is heavier than water, so it sinks to the bottom, but it's the vapors that come up, the volatiles. Um, but that is not, is, that isn't as, really a concern that we've heard of at this point, but we're still gonna be looking into that. Um, and if we go into any of the soil that is saturated with the water. That soil, not the other soil, but that soil, uh, also would need to be, uh, managed as contaminated soil.
Just go back to what Kevin brought up.
Yeah.
And the other Kevin had a meeting.
Yeah, and we always had, were under the impression that it wasn't going to be an issue. Well, it's now an issue, uh, so, um. Two things happened, uh, after a lot of discussion, we reached out to Mark Mills Paul of Sterling Environmental. They're a very well, well-known consulting firm in the area. Um, they, I know he's been used as expert witness in various contamination situations. Um, and had some conversations with him about what would need to happen, um, and it sounded like this was something in their wheelhouse that they could handle. The second thing is I reached out to John Morris, who is the.
Honeywell.
He's the Global Remediation Director, I think, is his title, for Honeywell International. Um, and had a call with him and had a good discussion, uh, where they agreed in principle to fund the cost. Of this firm and expenses that go above and beyond the sewer project as dictated by the original plans. So, we're working on an agreement with that, uh, and that's set. But the basic matter of fact is that we're ready to move, and we need to get stuff here as soon as possible. Uh, we've spoken with, um, Mark Mills Paul, our engineers, about sort of like technically what would have to happen. Um, and that we're gonna follow up with Mark this week to make sure all those plans are, are there, because. If we get into the scenario where, you know, we may not need this, we may not dig deep enough, it's gonna be close, we see, we think that for the most part. Everything is above the water table, there's a couple specific locations where there is a, a legitimate concern. Um, so just pray that doesn't rain for like the next week, no. Pipe down out there.
So, Rob, you said something, just wanna, you said it's important for us to get stuff here as soon.
It's important to have a plan. Okay.
You're not talking about physically getting stuff here.
No, there would be physical things we'd have, likely we would need a frac tank, which is like a twenty-two thousand gallon huge. It looks like a dumpster, but it's basically main for materials. Um, and we would probably need multiples, one specific for water and one specific for, for, uh, for the dirt. And then, once those are set aside, those need to be handled, so in the case of the water one, it would likely be run through a portable GAK system like. Uh, it was when we did the well three testing for the soil on.
Incinerated or whatever.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm past the peak level of what I'm comfortable talking about, Andy, you wanna?
The, the point is, once we break ground over there, we have to have these here just on a. The lo, once, once you're digging, the longer you sit there and wait, now you're pumping more water in there every single day, you gotta keep going.
And it's not just that, but the contractors are paid for a certain amount of time, so if they have to all of a sudden stop and wait multiple days. And it could go into other problems.
Problem is that we don't have a, an agreement from Honeywell to do, we have a verbal.
We do, and I, I can report that, uh, their attorney Dale DeNoyer did call me later Friday.
Right.
Left a message, and I called him back today, that he wanted to discuss it with me, so clearly Honeywell's reached out to him.
Yeah.
But we have to have that in place, but regardless. The timing of this is such that this only unfortunately arose after work had commenced. And according to the schedule, they're gonna be in that neck of the woods next week. And in order to avoid any delays, we have to have, the village should have in place. A plan to manage the water and soils if groundwater is encountered, and it may be. You know, knock on wood, it won't be, but you have to have even that plan in place to avoid the delays. Uh, so that the project can keep going.
And it may just be.
Yeah, even if, sorry to cut you off, even if an agreement in principle. You gotta do it.
Yeah.
Is to, all of that work is gonna have to be subject to a separate change order or a cost separately tracked. Any costs incurred by Sterling, and I'll go over that in a minute. Obviously separately tracked, and ultimately, even if the agreement's not in place before the work starts, you're gonna be looking Honeywell to cover that.
We don't wanna use our contingency that we have in that project plan for this.
Correct.
Correct, because the, the work has just started.
Right, we don't know.
And whether that means we have a frac tank sitting here, or we have someone on call in case we hit something and when next day we, we have it up there, that's, that's, those are the nitty gritty details that work out with Sterling Environmental.
Yep, and, um, MRB did. Opine to the mayor that it would be appropriate at this point to bring in, you know, specialized environmental engineering to help on that issue that. Time was of the essence.
It, yeah, it was a little bit out of their comfort zone.
I mean, the soil might not be nearly as bad, I mean, if you look at diesel spills and stuff, they basically dig it out and put it on dark.
Right.
You know, so it might not be that big that we have to, the water's gonna be a.
Yeah, and there's, there's, I mean, eh, the pipe work could be fine, but we also have to put a pump station in there, and we also have to go underneath the Woods Brook. Uh, directional drilling. And that one is very, there's very specific permits involved with that, because we had to go through Army Corps of Engineers and DEC.
But that's not related to this issue.
It could be, cause it's right there.
It is.
Cause when we're leaving, uh, we're, we're crossing mechanic streets. Uh, I don't know if that falls within the, 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 sort of the zone of concern, if you will. Um, but that's what we have to look at.
So what do we need to do tonight?
We have a resolution set to, uh, retain Sterling Environmental, um, Andy, do you want me to, I don't need to read all of this, right?
You don't, and in general, we spoke with, uh, Mark Mills Paul at Sterling on Friday, explained what was going on, and we prepared. For the village, a, um, proposed services agreement outlining the scope of work. Standard terms and conditions and the, uh, rates. Obviously, this is not a lump sum, we don't know what we're gonna encounter, but at least this does provide the, uh, billing rates per position. And what's in front of you is a resolution just outlining that this issue came up, that the projects have started. Um, MRB has recommended retaining specialized environmental engineering to support them on this. We've received the proposal letter from Sterling. It's also informed enough that in general, obviously, as a municipality, you bid these services, these are specialized or expert services. It's exempt from public bidding. This may also, I didn't put it in the resolution, could also qualify as an emergency because of the timing of the work. But all that's laid out.
This is the guarantee of the rights here.
Authorize retaining Sterling under the terms and conditions of the proposal.
There's expensive lawyers.
They're gonna cover all this, yeah, that's what they said.
I know, I know you were looking at me when. That's the question I was gonna ask you. You have to put out the. This resolution doesn't include disposal costs of the water or anything like that, this is just.
It's just the engineering services.
What Mark will do is take a look at the whole project and have protocols in place, but there will be additional expenses if you have to get the frac tanks in. Have to manage.
And that's gonna be paid by, if every.
Um, just to say under.
It'll be kept track of through change orders.
And we're not looking at something coming on the backside, do we have to give up anything for that, right?
Correct.
But none of that's.
Yeah. Yes.
Who makes that call, the environmental guy, you have to call him?
What's that, on what falls and, and doesn't fall in? The services for this firm are without question.
Something worth noting.
The, the question was, who's gonna make the determination of what falls under and what doesn't, and I think that's gonna come back to the agreement. What falls under the category of needed to happen versus didn't need to happen?
Who makes the determination if, if they find, if they do find water, who makes that determination has to be removed, I mean? The engineer, this engineer, Sterling, or is it gonna be?
Ultimately, we heard from DEC that if any waters encountered that is above. The stone bedding material, it must be removed and managed as a, uh, hazardous.
So, the engineering group on, who's working on it, is gonna make that call.
Contractors and engineers all heard that.
Okay.
We didn't even before getting to that.
Clerk that works for the MRB on this?
Yes, he was the one, uh, uh, administrating and observing, and he, he was there at that meeting as well.
And Sterling would need to coordinate with, with MRB.
Yeah.
We've got some thoughts on why this issue came up when it did, but that, that's gonna be the subject of further discussions with MRB. It, it's put the village in a little bit of a timing bind, uh, on that part of the sewer project. Um, Brian, your question, uh, the, the letter itself outlines the scope of work. It's clearly identifying hazardous materials in the sewer.
That was a different person, a different office.
What, what Brian wrote is, in the terms and conditions for Sterling's proposal letter, there's a paragraph eleven dealing with hazardous material. This, I would say, means if any different or additional hazardous waste or hazardous substance were encountered. That would be outside the scope of the services. You'll note in the, um, proposal letter itself, Sterling has already gotten information on this particular state super fund site. What contaminants are at issue, that has already received, uh, sewer contract and project documents from MRB. that has already received, uh, sewer contract and project documents from MRB. Those are referenced in the proposal letter, so that really establishes the scope of work here. If something different than the contaminants identified for this particular state super fund site are encountered, that'd be outside the scope of this.
And that, there is a, any possibility that when they start digging, you don't know what.
You don't know what you're gonna encounter.
Right.
Right, that's, that's why that's in there.
Okay, that's, just wanna check that, that look, because it is hazardous materials.
Correct.
Thank you, Andy.
Alright. Uh, so I'll just read the now therefore be resolved, Andy, for this resolution, by the village board of trustees, the village of Uzic Falls, and special session duly convenable follows. One, the board of trustees of the village of Uzic Falls hereby approves the professional services proposal submitted by Sterling Environmental Engineering PC for services as described here and above and as set forth in the letter attached hereto as exhibit A and made a part hereof, and further hereby authorizes the mayor of the village of Uzic Falls to execute such professional service, services agreement on behalf of the village of Uzic Falls, subject to the terms and conditions set forth in exhibit A hereto. So I need the, uh, resolution formally, uh, introduced.
I'll make that motion.
Ben? Second Craig, and, uh, this will be a roll call vote, any further discussion on this?
Trustee O'Malley?
Yes.
Ben already said yes, trustee Pine already said yes, Vanessa is absent, trustee Bushner?
Yes.
Mayor Allen?
Yes.
And deputy mayor Ryan.
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. She didn't ask.
Oh, she thought, you said yes, because you introduced it.
You introduced it, so.
No, it's alright, you're still, it's fine. We, 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 thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I'm sorry, I made you ahead. That was for good measure.
Question, why is, uh, dispatch still in the blanket?
It's the phone line that's connected to the lot.
Uh, they got all, all the pieces over there. Can we have all those pieces back of, uh, the letter we sent down to Sterling stuff? There it is, he's got it. That's it, flip it over.
Puts it in the dock or something like that.
Yeah. Yep, so it's, uh, that's it.
That was.
Well, I don't know, it's, it's all there, we got the final, okay. Um.
That was good.
Thank you, yeah, so that was, that was my break, my break, uh, we did a lot of Woods Brook stuff too, which I'll update you on in, at the May meeting, which if this meeting keeps going, we're gonna be into May, uh-huh, she did there, it was funny. Okay, uh, going back to, uh, Denise, can we pick your brain on one more item?
Did you hear about the dispatch, she said it's for the phone?
Dispatch is for the phone line, um, there's one you want to ask.
We already asked it, shade trees, she answered that too.
Shade trees answer?
Yeah, we're done.
Alright, so, do we have any other, or are we set, uh, set to move forward on this budget? If we are set to move forward on it, I'm looking for a motion to adopt the final budget for the fiscal year nineteen twenty.
Motion.
As.
Current amendments, correct?
With, with, with current changes.
Motion.
Ben?
Yep, second.
Second Craig, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stentions? Carries? Alright, thank you. Denise, thank you.
Sorry, Denise.
Thank you, thank you, sorry to keep you here, yeah. Thank you very much. Okay, so we have finished off the old business, uh, we finished off the new business related to the sewer, now we are on the, we already did the American Legion. Okay, um, looking for a motion to put out a bid, uh, for purchase of a tractor for the wastewater treatment plant with these specifications right here. Bobby?
Is this a replace, uh, I'll, I'll second it.
Second Craig, okay.
It's a, we're trading in and giving replacement.
Um, Andy, can you, uh, this is for the tractor purchase, we're trading in, but we just wanted to, we wanted to make sure that we do the proper things as per our.
Yeah, in general, as, as I understood it, the, the purchase would not be off either a state or county.
Oh, it's not from the state contract?
I don't believe it was, this was the tractor, it was not, so.
They got two separate quotes, but the lower quote was not a state contract price.
Okay.
So, what are we putting out for bid? Alright. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries? Um, we had an individual, uh, reach out to us, uh, expressing interest in being a member of the zoning board. Uh, Janet Spitz, by the way. Um, I don't have any further information on this, I just know that she's expressed interest, um.
Um, I'd like to make a motion that we table this until the, uh, till the May meeting, so we can get more information about where she lives and a little bit of background about her.
Okay. I need a second on that. Craig, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, carries. Um, in that case, um, unless there's anyone else wants to bring any business up to the board, I will entertain a motion to go into executive se, uh, session.
Uh, motion.
To discuss, uh, pending litigation, since we've already discussed the personnel. Uh, motion by Ben, second by Craig, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed, just kidding.
I had a little bit of a heart attack, alright, motion carries, we are entering executive session at seven fifty-four PM.
I'm not talking about anything when I come back, right?